Call the roll.
Bird.
Here.
Stein.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Back.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Instrum.
Here.
Okay, number two, approval of agenda. Any changes, your honor? Uh, no changes this evening to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Back.
Yes.
Instrum.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Okay, number three, presentation petitions, other communications, A. Uh, two thousand twenty-three Economic Development Week proclamation, Brenda.
Well, I believe, it's not with Jennifer.
Hi.
Let me talk it. I believe that you were routed all a copy of the proclamation.
Yes.
And I don't know that we need to go through the formality of having to read it, but uh, just to to brief the council a bit, the first week of May is always Economic Development Week. And so one of the things we do is go out to all of our councils and remind them again how much uh, how the importance plays in our community, whether it be a new industry to town, a new subdivision in your community, or small business development, it's all economic development. You need all those pieces working out of writing communities. So we appreciate the opportunity to work on your behalf each and every day and look forward to to what we have ahead of us yet to for the balance of this year. So um, you know, I will get a photo of you. I will just say that for records.
Okay.
Gets us all in.
Stat please. That's hey.
Thank you.
Right, it's a fine name.
It's me as well, so.
Yeah, you're still up.
So I will tribute our report here. I'm gonna take that, pass it around.
Is that different?
And out to the audience. So this is our report uh, that wraps up Q1. Thank you. This is what I'll take a picture of. This is a fancy thing, so. Um, wraps up the first post of two thousand twenty-three calendar, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, so uh, things we've highlighted in our report is, of course, the the grant opportunity was sent to Iowa Housing Trust Fund. Uh, the next time I'm back and in front of you, I'll probably be uh, visiting more about that and put the Economic Development Committee to work in in scoring those and analyzing that. So that'll be fun to make those awards and get those dollars to work in the community. Um, if not by Ben by twelve Keeler, I encourage you. Those are really good there. And we've got a number of catalyst things in the works, and I'm sure Councilman Warmer will talk about that. We rolled out the labor shed. Couple other updates I'd highlight is the waste water treatment grant of two hundred thousand. Uh, we're very excited about the market rate rental housing developer uh, that's looking to purchase some property from the city uh, to put up a hundred units of housing. Uh, the housing needs assessment is well on, well on the way. Flip it over to the back, you can see the students relates to jobs. Um, and some of the things that we're doing with students in the community. Um, there was an Innovate You event at Iowa State's Research Park and students from Boone and Ogden were there and pitched ideas and some of my staff was there and and it was, sounds like it was a really neat event and you guys are front and center in the livability magazine and of course highlighted uh, the senator's visit tag certain. So that's really our our first quarter visit. I take any questions you might have uh, for me this evening.
Any questions for Brenda?
Got some neat things in the works uh, as we look ahead over here into the next year, which is already well underway, so. I won't take any more of your time. I'll
Thank you very much.
Right and early tomorrow morning for
All right, thank you. Okay, number four, report of standing committees, policy administration. They have no report. Public safety, David.
No report, your honor.
Utility, Terry.
Uh, no report. We are still anticipating uh, the UV project to be done sometime substantial completion in June. Right?
The schedule says May, but yeah.
Uh, boxes.
June is a good pick.
Boxes, June pick, yes. So
Yeah.
That, other than that, no.
How about uh, economic development, Terry?
Um, yeah, there's a couple of things. We uh, uh, had a economic development committee meeting and we uh, approved a BDF grant for eight sixteen Eighth Street, which is the first national bank building uh, McKnight's own that building. They're turning uh, doing some exterior tuck pointing, window repair, doing some interior stuff. There's also a hundred thousand dollar catalyst grant that's involved. That was our our city match was that part of that BDF grant. David and I got to take a tour of the building. Pretty impressive inside the building. Uh, those apartments are really nice. And they're turning it into B and Bs and are full. So they're really nice apartments. I I was really impressed, weren't you, David?
Yeah, yeah, I believe, was it half of them or something? Were be Airbnbs?
Yeah, Airbnb's.
What's the address?
Eight sixteen, right across the street from the green space, RE/MAX office. Um, yeah, and uh, so new windows, new tuck pointing, so facelip. And then the interior as well. And then uh, see Jeremy's in the back there. There's, they started their BDF renovations on the front of their building too, so that's underway. Um, I'm we're assuming that Hans Bame, Bame Insurance and that uh, H and R block will get underway here soon too with theirs, so. Lot going on with BDF. That's all I have, your honor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number five, department report. Uh, Dave's not with us this evening. Um, next up, finance officer Andrea.
Yeah, the first resolution is for the twenty E agreement with the Iowa governmental health and related benefits program. That is the uh, program for the Iowa GH IGCP um, for health insurance. That is the whole part of it. Uh, so I need a proposal for that.
Second. Call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Also back.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrum.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Stein.
Yep.
Uh, the next resolution is the approval of the service agreements for benefit insurance services. This would include um, EBS, they are a third party uh, processor for our partial self-funding of our health insurance. They have also been doing our dental uh, plan for the last couple of years. And what we want to do is add Cobra Administration and our flex to that um, also. And then that also includes our vision renewal with God's whole then uh, the provision. Sorry, I need a motion for that one.
So move. Call the roll.
Also back.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrum.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Okay, next up, city attorney Jim.
No report.
Uh, public works, Waylon.
Real quick, I just wanted to report to you guys, uh, I kept blocking it started. If you get any points of dirty water from your in the areas, we're starting it and it will run continuous through the season um, all the way through fall. Um, all the notices went out online, we notify and on Facebook, I believe, so. Everybody should be community aware on that. Uh, number two is something we talked about uh, early, early, early planning last year, the traffic signals at Mamie and Green and Mamie and Benton do not detect vehicles coming northbound very well. The loops, loops got cut, the wires, only half are working. We're gonna tear those out next week and replace them with exceptions. Both both those intersections will have one direction closed, southbound closed from those intersections. I'm gonna send out mailers to the residents that live in those blocks, knowing that they have to exit through the south. Um, and that's just just looking to get those up and going and everything working good. Number three, I believe I am going to open alleys tomorrow uh, to commercial traffic, so. But that, when you cross that one off.
Got them all graded now.
We got them all graded, got through town staff, got one round through and we put rock, great. They're holding up okay, so.
Thank you. Anything under engineering, engineering, go ahead.
Thanks, sir. First item under engineering is change order number two for the wastewater disinfection uh, project. Uh, we have a letter from uh, Fox Strand. Uh, they reviewed all the paperwork from the contractor uh, as well as Perry from SEH. And they have approved it and that the the costs are reasonable. And the cost, there's three. There was a leak that they needed to find and and fix by the clarifier. That one uh, is on here as well. This first one for twenty-one thousand nineteen eleven days. The second one is uh, they found it another leak that they exposed and and found that uh, it wasn't necessary to fix it, at least at this point. But they spent time at a day uh, finding it. That's sixteen fifty for one day. And then the third one is we had, excuse me, discovery of potentially explosive gases in the excavation area when they were excavating. This happened back in August. So there are some uh, extra work and everything that took place for that. Fire department was out there two, three times, I think, on this as well. Uh, so they they fixed that, so we're good on that. So there's these three that uh, Perry and I discussed, we had a meeting with them uh, with the state. It's also been discussed at utility. Uh, so I'll answer any questions you have. Otherwise, I would as well ask for a motion to approve change order number two uh, for a total amount of twenty-eight thousand three eighty-three seventy-nine. This has no effect on the other items that we're working on uh, with the contractor with the UV project. Uh, so it won't affect that one in any, in any way.
Second. Call the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrum.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Also back.
Yes.
Okay, give me just a second here. Second one is uh, resolution for the grant. If you remember, we talked a few weeks back about a third grant for the UV project, amount of two hundred thousand dollars. This has now come to us for approval. There's a resolution uh, that needs approved by council and then we'll proceed with the grant.
So moved.
Second.
Instrum.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Back.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
That's all I have in engineering, sir.
Uh, public safety, Chief Adams.
No report, your honor.
Uh, Chief Leavell.
No report, your honor.
Uh, city administrator Bill.
Thank you. Give me just a second, please. So the first item is our IT position. Uh, in the last week, we received notification from our IT person. He's a contracted employee part-time with with a several years has uh, going to resign that position effective June thirtieth of this year. So I will tell you that we pay him somewhere around fourteen or fifteen thousand a year. Uh, PD uses him as well under a separate contract. Um, from what we have seen, there is no way we're gonna find somebody like that again for that amount of money for IT. I have reached out to the county and asked them if they'd be interested in sharing an IT position. I'm waiting to hear from them. Uh, other than doing it, uh, Andrea doing a little research uh, on this position, we haven't done any further. I'm waiting to hear from the county uh, if that is an option. Uh, that would be, I think, the number one option uh, as far as staff is concerned. He's in town, is close. It it makes sense for two entities to share a position, but I would tell you it will be more than fifteen thousand dollars.
What do we need time-wise? When you say part-time, is that twenty hours? I mean, what?
Depends on the month. Some months it's slow. Uh, if you're talking about the current contractor, some months it's slow, some months it's a, it's a lot. It's a lot of hour.
So I mean.
No set.
But the salary is low for the hours that's probably
It's low for
all in that, yeah.
Yeah, hours are just the position. It's very low.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been very lucky over the last several years.
And we're implementing three sixty-five this year. We'll have to have somebody do all that too.
Plus, we have, yes, good point, Carl. And and as well, you know, we're doing the new software and we're right in the middle of it, twenty-five percent through.
Yeah, there's not a lot on on the IT side of that. However, if I run into an issue, then I may need some guidance on how to do something.
So you'll kind of look and see maybe what are some average kind of ongoing salaries that it will look like it'll take?
Yes.
I mean.
I hear from the county. Now, I see if there's an interest. That's, that's my first goal unless you direct me to do other. That's um, I'm waiting to hear from them to see if we can make that work. If that doesn't work, then I'll have to come up some more ideas, yes. Any questions?
Okay. Second item is uh, if you remember at the last council meeting, uh, the request from the chamber for monies uh, for the two thousand twenty-three festival. Um, I think you all talked at the time about ten thou- or five thousand. I think uh, Jennifer, who's here, has made a ten thousand dollar request. Uh, as far as funding for that, I told you I didn't know anything at the time. I'd have looked at the budget. Andrea came up with a good idea that I'm bringing forward. Uh, hotel motels so far has been pretty good. We have not made a budget amendment yet. That's coming in May, so we could use some money out of hotel motel uh, for the amount that you all decide. So that'd be one way funded. Or it could come out of the economic development. Uh, I prefer the hotel motel, but again, that's up to you folks.
Yeah, I think hotel motel is great. I mean, that's the, where it fits programmatically, at least.
Jennifer, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, I heard those uh, samples that I shared. I did email um, the team, plus I just brought some extra copies if um, if needed. So if anybody didn't, my, my email, just for a matter of transparency, I know that um, but anyway, um, so Terry had mentioned that he hadn't seen Puffer number, not well, and so I don't know if this particular before incident was asked or not, but um, last year, this, you guys had to feel like how much of, um, over, you know, kind of where we ended up at. And so Puffer ended up just um, above twenty-six hundred dollars. And so that allows um, you know, some instead of where is our money goes and and how, how it's spent. So again, a matter of transparency, I would in, I think, to um, see Eli and on Andres' point, I think that hotel motel is a, is the best fit for this. And so this will be a report that you guys refer.
So if you click, I don't know.
You paid him the five grand already, correct?
For last year. For twenty-two, yes, sir. So this would be for twenty-three. And I know you sent an email out. I don't know if the elected officials got a chance to look at that. I don't know if I got that.
Okay, so. Sent earlier, like, what's
Yeah, it was. So from the email, at least what I got from Jen, I'll share with you that the total gain for twenty-two was ten thousand five thirty-four seventy. However, they had some special costs. Was it fencing and things like that that they bought during that time for that festival that that uh, that knocks that down to twenty-six ninety-six, but the festival itself was ten thousand in the black. It's just, it brought it down because they bought that that equipment or the fencing that they'll use year after year. Is that a fair assessment?
One time.
One time expense, yeah.
Yes.
This, I mean, I, the chambers, the chambers put on the Puffer, and I don't want to speak to what the last teams did or didn't do when it came to the finances, but from this last report and and certainly everything that I'm doing this year, my time has, um, and no one's time is factored into this. So I mean, that, you know, with 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 the previous administration, you know, Mike had three full-time people um, while working on cover at some point or another. And um, you know, there.
We literally don't have anybody that is working for you.
Yeah.
Correct.
So. Um, but at the, at the end of the day, I mean, it's gonna get done and.
I think five thousand's fair. I mean, if you made ten grand really, and you've already bought the fencing and things. Uh, you've already, I mean, you, and you still netted twenty-six hundred gain. I mean, I don't know why we'd give ten. It's because we're nice. I mean, I
We afford seventy-five hundred in the hotel motel revenues?
Yeah.
Is there enough? Seventy-five hundred split the difference.
That's what I thought we could split it. I mean, if you're asking ten and we were looking at five.
I'll make a motion, seventy-five hundred. What, what, sorry, what is five gonna get us instead of a title sponsorship of everything?
So that's a great question. So that at five, there's certainly a lot of different events that you guys could, if you wanted to name a particular event, like the block party, for example, or, you know, that would give, you know, there's a lot of advertising and promotion around that particular event being a title sponsor. Um, at seventy-five, um, I think that that's something that we can even talk about and having more publicity throughout the the festival itself. So you might want to choose, you know, say, if you did the, the um, the TGIF block party on a Friday night, you know, that's really kind of where a lot of the signage light, but we had, you know, good promotion throughout the festival. And then, of course, that's before during social media and that kind of fun stuff as well. So I mean, really, at that point, it just becomes a matter of the level of support that the city wants to 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 give and and what we want to do in return and in exchange for that really is give um, give the city that top billing in terms of promotion and exposure. Um, I mean, at the end of the day, this is the town festival. And so, I mean, this we want to be partners in this, in this celebration. Um, and so I certainly understand that the history of it has always, the history of the of Puffer has always come from the chamber. Um, but from my, my perspective, and I, and I, you know, kind of be new in this role and I, I want to be partners in this process.
What's the county's donation?
The county hasn't donated anything toward Puffer building.
Big surprise.
No.
Shock.
Well, I mean, it is the town. That's what I would expect them to, but as I don't
Like you said, it was, I thought you said it was a county event, though. Right?
Probably.
Yeah.
Probably not from the town, that's all that my knowledge. I mean, all the fun days, I guess, I don't know what the supervisors give towards that or the madred, you know, um.
I don't know either.
Parade and stuff like that. I, you're right, I don't know those numbers, but I didn't ask them for the Puffer Puffer billing.
I'm not so concerned about our, the top billing or the billing that or credit we get for it. Um, but more of uh, to me, it's a major event that the community puts on. And so making sure that we're providing the support that um, you need to help put it on. And I don't know if if our donation has been the same for years. I mean, if your costs have gone up and and so I really you know, I guess I want to make sure we're giving a fair share that you could continue to put on a good quality event.
Well, the problem is this is a reinvented event.
Yes.
So that's the problem.
Paulie's gone downhill the past few years, in my opinion, so.
What do you mean by re-
Be reinventing this, right?
I guess reinvented, I
I'm, I'm making solid tweaks.
Yes.
Change is hard, Terry. So I'm making solid tweaks.
So.
Terry, what do you mean?
Semantics.
What do you mean by reinvented? I don't.
But if, if you're looking at dollars and cents.
What do you mean by reinvented event?
This is a reinvented event. This is, this is all the vendors out down there, the, they're moving to the main stage, the main street. It's completely different than what Puffer has been in the past.
They tried moving it to the fairgrounds in the past and it failed miserably, in my opinion, but.
It's just she, and and I don't have anything against it. I think it's a great idea.
I mean, maybe it's a good
She reinvented this event and and we're gonna dump ten thousand dollars into this event that we don't know is going to work.
And if it, and if it profited last year.
Hundred and fifty degrees.
Yeah, and it profits, why would we give more? Because now we're just
I guess I wouldn't unless the costs have gone up. And that's what I, I didn't your budget, do that what you need.
It got to five thousand last year. Five thousand from this year. We also do in kind with them too. Picnic tables and city services and barricades and all that good stuff.
We have an online question.
Is there a steering committee for Puffer and aren't there, aren't they helpers to launch the C-Back?
Yeah, there's a steering committee.
And are there helpers launch the C-Back?
Uh, there probably been volunteers, yes. We've actually had a lot of books come out and and in fact, I think to this to whatever degree, um, I I've really been impressed the level of folks that have come out and emailed me or or contacted me uh, that want to participate. And and to Terry's point, certainly the vendors are going out to uh, to Art in the Park. Uh, that's actually harking back to you know, before Kurt um, and a very, very popular event for for the community was Art in the Park. And that's, I mean, that we revived with the festival and um, they just said it's bringing back.
That was I recollecting, it was the vendors downtown on Saturday and then on Sunday it was Art in the Park.
Yeah, me. I, I hope it works great. I mean, I honestly hope it's great, but I'm just telling you, I was born and raised here. Forever, people watch the parade and they work their way downtown, hang out, go check out all the vendors, then they go grab a broad or grab, I I'm not saying change is bad. I'm just, I hope you have a lot of stuff going on that day to bring people downtown, because otherwise they're not coming downtown.
I, I, and I understand that. In fact, that's why I really try to pump that up. But we've got the water park, I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be a ton of fun for kids. We have a number of events that are going on downtown and um, including music and um, fun stuff during the day. Of course, we've got the night concert, but I, I am going to be meeting with all of the stores themselves and really promoting what they have going on during Puffer too. So the idea again is to really put that spotlight on our downtown and again, really develop that that detail. And so in the past, for example, they weren't allowed to even be up on their sidewalks, had kind of a sidewalk sale, which that's not, that's
Right.
That's, that's fully available. In fact, going to be suggested, not recommended. So I, I really want to make sure that this is a, a town festival that everyone really will enjoy. It's kind of a for everybody.
We have another question. Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Linda Blakely. I'm just a little confused as to, um, this is the second time I've heard that um, Ms. Hanson stated that there wasn't help and that's the, some of the funding would go to help launch this. That's why I asked if there was a steering committee. Um, I, I understand that the previous chamber had three people working on it or three staff, but in reality um, I guess I'm not sure what the additional monies go for. Uh, if there's a handout, we can't see it. So it, you know, is there a reason that that the chamber is not asking or being specific at what the additional money goes for?
Um, so great question. So no, actually, this mine won't go towards staff or anything. We do have a steering committee and we, we have volunteers. Um, I think what Linda was talking about or or I, somebody had mentioned about whether I had, you know, the other staff had, sorry. The other administration had three people and so their staff time was not reflected in the, in the budget or in the uh, the, the profit loss report that I handed out. And so somebody asked if I had help and I, so no, I, I am one person. However, yes, I have great steering committee as a team, volunteers that are dedicated in both fundraising as well as logistics. I think what, I mean, certainly in all areas, our pricing has gone up. Um, certainly there's things that we are going to be, you know, whether it be in advertising, um, signage, printing, um, any of those things that uh, that are are year-specific. So every year they have to be redone. Um, unfortunately, we haven't figured out how to make one banner and let it stick, you know. So it, all of those things have to be redone and all those things have gone up in price. So all of, all of our money goes into Puffer and stays in Puffer. And that's a great point, because whatever is remainder year after year will stay within the Puffer group. And so that, that's my um, as I move forward in turning Puffer into a five oh one C three of its own, friends of Puffer, where the community can promote it, if it, if the community can support it and donate towards it. Um, the financial reports are are such out of any other nonprofit um, that the money that's either generated or lost with Puffer, uh, is gonna have to be absorbed within that, that group. So again, I want to make sure that I'm a part of that and 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 I think so I want provide resources and provide that, that historic context of the last forty-six years. Um, but at the end of the day, I really think that this is something that the community really should be able to put on and um, a- as it is a community and town festival. Does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, how much does the band cost that you got? Can you?
Right, so uh, Blessed Union sold us ten thousand dollars.
So this, okay.
Any other questions? Oh, we had a
Yeah, I motioned seventy-five hundred dollars.
There a second?
I'll second that.
Call the roll.
Bird.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
No.
Also back.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrum.
No.
Please send an invoice.
Please send an invoice.
Okay. Uh, next up, her bill is.
Yes, thank you. Next on the agenda for me to discuss, new funding option for our department extension project. As the elected officials are aware, we rebid this project. We have received those bids. One bid was for seven hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred. The other bid was for eight hundred fifty-nine thousand. So what we have budgeted for uh, for total revenue on this project is six hundred ninety-eight thousand. So that leaves us a hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred fifty-three thousand short of of what the bids are. Andre and I have been doing some work on this and coming up with some options. I think uh, we have found an option that that we like. Uh, I'll explain it to you and you can, uh, if you want to move forward with this project, you can decide if that's the case. If you remember back, oh, it's been a year or more, we received COVID money, grant money specifically for emergency services. Uh, that has been setting in an account. Uh, the balance of that is two hundred ninety-four thousand, three hundred twenty-four. Uh, certainly, this project fits uh, what that money and should be used for. Uh, it's money we receive from the federal government through COVID. Uh, if we use the uh, hundred sixty-six thousand and some odd dollars, we have roughly, I don't know, around a hundred twenty-five or six thousand left. Uh, certainly, we don't want any change orders in this. We'll be watching it closely because we are adding money if you so decide. So that'll be a very important aspect that Justin and I have already talked about.
Sorry, but what was the total number for the bid?
I'm sorry. Bid was seven ninety-three, seven. That low bid leaves us hundred sixty-six, nine fifty-three short. Uh, there's two ninety-four, three twenty-four in that account that we have, that we have not done anything with. It still leaves us uh, money for any unforeseen circumstances, but a good portion for another emergency service project down the road if council so chooses.
That money in a certain time?
I don't think. So that's what we've come up with. Uh, I could go with these other options, but that is the one that's to staff is at least the most reasonable. Yes, sir.
Have the money set aside for the additional cost of the fire truck.
That's for taking care of, it's all paid.
How much was that?
Justin?
Uh, the total bill for the fire truck was three hundred right around three hundred forty thousand, three thirty-seven, something.
What did the city have to supply toward that?
Uh, forty, right around forty thousand.
Okay, thank you. So again, if there's any other questions.
I think we've had it for over a year, had to use it. So seems like it's right up the alley of the amount of money. And that's use case.
It's starting to get any cheaper, so.
Yeah, it's getting cheaper.
You need a motion?
Yeah, if that motion could be that we can use the money, obviously, we'll be watching this very closely, but we can use the money out of that uh, COVID grant money for emergency services, rather than just say a hundred and sixty-six thousand where we would have to come back then. If that makes sense.
I'll make a motion to use the balance of the uh, COVID relief money for emergency services to pay off the difference in the uh, fire station.
I'll second it.
Call the roll.
Steins?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Thank you for that. Um, my next uh, is Resolution thirty-one oh six. Brenda earlier mentioned about the housing needs study. Uh, through Mid Iowa Planning Alliance, we we belong to that organization. We have for about the past year. Uh, one note on the resolution, it says the amount of twelve thousand dollars. I know we talked about eight thousand from the city at the last council meeting. We will be reimbursed by the Boone County Economic Growth for four thousand dollars. So we'll get the bill, but so we'll be twelve thousand, but we'll get for for that back, is my understanding. And I would need, yeah, sorry.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Burr?
Yeah.
Stein?
Yes.
Okay, uh, next one that's not on the agenda, just for discussion, is, as you know, you have approved the budget for two thousand twenty-four. And in that budget included a full-time position for a recreational director. Um, so this is a time for discussion on timing of that, when you'd like that position hired. I will tell you that the wellness committee met yesterday at four o'clock here. And uh, obviously, that position was discussed in the meeting. So is there some things you want me to wait on? Uh, what would you like to see before we advertise it? You just want me to take it and run with it? And do you want me to do it at this time?
Did the committee have any input on that?
They want one.
Yeah, that was the basis of the uh, input that, yes, that would be the. I mean, I'm sorry, that's.
Plainly put.
That's.
Yeah. For this process to get going. Um, I guess to that end, uh, job description, duties, comparable salaries, or other, just rec directors, not parks and rec. Before we put the job.
Recreational director.
Yeah.
Assuming uh, as a department head that will answer to me.
Correct, yes.
Board, is that correct?
Yes. Okay, that's that's my opinion, that it would be that way.
I've heard um, people say we, we don't need one unless we get the community center built. But this is so much broader than that. This is
Right.
A broader position than just.
This phase zero of that. And I I was in a meeting with uh, um, the soccer coaches for the the soccer club, and they thought that this position would greatly benefit their organization, be able to schedule things as a first step, even if nothing else happened. Just the ability to coordinate.
Right.
Um, and the ability to, you know, have a central communication hub and things like that.
And haven't we relied on volunteers to do a lot of this? So it's probably time to get a little more organized approach.
Yeah, and that's just one example of all the different independent uh, recreational clubs that exist and, you know, even the select teams and stuff like that. But to your point, you know, there is a, there is a tier after that, if additional movement happens on a recreation center of whatever shape, size, or parameter, that's a different job. Who, for this rec director. So I don't know what the discussion is on that.
Right, I think that would.
The salary wise.
That would be, right, and we budgeted uh, eighty for the salary. Eighty-five for the salary. Um, part of the job schedule will include that that they would work on uh, a wellness, in the wellness center if one should be built, number one, number uh, two, that position when hired will very much be part of that wellness committee. And doing a lot of the legwork that they're trying to find out if depending on the timing of the wellness center and how far this and how quickly this progresses. So I'm getting that you want me to go full speed ahead.
I think we need to, need the position.
Okay, well, can can we get a comparable salary ranges and uh, job description first? And then put the.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, yeah. And then put it out.
Part of the full speed ahead.
And, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, my last item is just an update. If you notice, we've completed city the council chambers except for the desk, they have taken the table to work on it. So hopefully the desk is next in here. Uh, and I think we're fine, budget wise, between LOST and general fund that uh, we have given the go-ahead for the painters to also repair the walls and do the auditorium.
Ah, good. Looks good.
Okay, good.
That's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number six, consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like removed and discussed separately, if not, a need to motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Beck, Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
And number seven, ordinance is a third reading ordinance twenty-two eighty-six to allow the city of Boone, Iowa to change the stop sign regulations on Hancock Drive and South Lynn Street, chapter sixty-five, section sixty-five point zero two.
So moved.
Second. All the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second. Call the roll.
Angstrom? Burr?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Okay, B, first reading ordinance twenty-two eighty-seven to allow the city of Boone, Iowa to change the stop sign regulation on First Street and Delaware Street, chapter sixty-five, section sixty-five point zero two, four, five.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Burr?
Yeah.
Stein?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Whenever you're done.
Yeah.
Now.
Yeah. Okay, one thing, uh, when we were talking about the startup, I I did explain all. At the next council meeting, we will bring the bids forward for you to accept the the bid. And then we'll start that process. I didn't bring it forward tonight because it purely was discussion, to see which direction you wanted to go. So that will come uh, to accept the bid on May first. Thank you, sir.
Good. Okay, mayor's comments. I have one comment. I sent, or I had Bill send everybody an email on, I have a concerned resident. And since then, I've had a few um people either make comments or call, but I sent out the the email I received along with some pictures. And I'm going to go ahead and read this because I know no one else knows what we're talking about. But this is a concerned citizen. Says, greetings, Mayor Slight. My name is Daniel Frederickson. My wife and I own a home in Boone and have two young children. About three years ago, we moved to Boone, Chicago, to raise our family in a safe environment with people who share more of our values. As you may or may not be aware, a pride celebration was held on April second at the public green space park downtown. This event hosted drag queens who dressed and danced in a sexually provocative manner in front of children and in a public view. I've attached two such photos, which I've had sent on. I know that these men were targeting children because promotional said the event was for all ages and a drag queen read a book promoting transgenderism to children. We find these actions repulsive, degenerate and immoral. We do not support the sexual sexualization of any children, much less our own. We do not support anyone for any reason showing sexual content of any kind to minors, but especially grown men promoting sexual content to minors. I'm not alone in my opinions and have talked to many parents in Boone who are like-minded in their disgust. My goal of writing you today is to make you aware of the situation and ask that you represent the values that most of us hold in Boone, namely that children should not be sexualized, used using your political position entrusted to you by us. We ask you to keep any similar events from being held in Boone. We do not want adults sexualizing children in our schools, library, parks, or any other public place. We ask that you aid in us protecting them and further furthering wholesome family values. Uh, thank you respectively, Daniel Frederickson. So I'm just passing that on. I don't know, I've had numerous pictures sent now. I've had, so I don't know what happened up there. So.
Thought it was a great time, honestly.
Yeah.
I was there the whole time. The whole thing. If I had kids, I would have took them, so.
Do we have any um?
I think one thing that, so did they read a book to children about trans, what am I trying to say?
Transgender.
They.
I think the book was like, be who you want to be, or be who you are.
Colors. And what colors we relate to. And it's a beautiful book. It's on the Pride of Fame, but uh, it's about a boy who his dad was born in blue. Everything is blue. Oh, I guess I should say my name. My name is Wilhelma Simmons. I'm homie Simmons. I but on the Pride of it, I paid for it out of my own pocket. Um, I qualified it. I, back twenty-three performers that come up and they were all dressed very respectfully. Um, everybody uh, changed like their songs to be hip appropriate, like Lady Star. And of that, uh, the one picture that I am was known about is the the old dancer. She was at the end of the day. Um, and it was a P. And she has her own business here in Boone. Um, she's teaching all the classes. And it's all interesting because old dancing, believe it or not, takes a lot of muscle in core strength and all that stuff. But back to the book. Uh, the book, the father was born in blue. He had everything was blue. The mom was born pink. Everything about her was pink. The boy he just thought he might be purple. And he's like, I really just feel better about being purple. And the dad's like, oh, no, no, you cannot be purple. You must be blue. And the wife was like, no, no, no. Maybe pink, maybe purple. And the father's like, no, no, no. But boy was small and said, my favorite color is purple. Oh, but you need to be blue. Why can't I be purple? And then the other children were like, I like to be glitter. I like to be yellow. And you know, that book is about colors. It wasn't about transgender. It was just being who you are here.
I'm just reading the email I got.
I know, but I wanted to explain that book. With respect. Explain that the the sexualization, there was no sexualization.
With respect, I disagree. On the picture, the picture on the front is a boy and his shadow, the title of the book is My Shadow is Pink. It's a shadow of a boy wearing a leotard, like Valerie. It is about transgenderism. This brought in the idea that boys can be girls, girls can be boys. That is my email, and I thank you for reading it. I came here to express my opinions and uh, to express the idea that children should not be sexualized. Children should not be promoted with sexual ideas of any kind, and especially not in public. I do not believe it was a family-friendly event. Whether you dress up in colors, whether you dress up with music like Baby Shark, that draws children in, and then you give them ideas that boys can be girls and girls can be boys. That's not an idea that I agree with. I believe that is an idea that is destructive to children, that causes depression, confusion. And honestly, we see a sad trend of teenage suicide in this country. I don't want that coming to Boone. I don't want that to happen to my children. And then I disagree.
And.
So.
Jim?
I'm gay and I have a boyfriend, um, or a husband, I guess. And if my parents didn't open up to me when I was little and teach me everything, then I probably would have committed suicide. But the fact I knew everything growing up made it very comfortable for me to come to my parents about my questions, and they were able to answer them. So, and I get emotional about it because it pisses me off, in lack of better words. I mean, am I not supposed to be up here because I'm gay? Because I like to go to drag shows? Because that's how I celebrate?
Respectfully, uh, respectfully, councilman, um, I'm here for for one idea. And that is that children should not be sexualized.
And they weren't. I was at that.
That's an idea.
I was at that event that whole time.
Any idea? I have right here in my hand, pictures from that event. Now, all of these are on Facebook. It's all open to everyone. Children handing money to a drag queen. I wouldn't want a woman dressed like this and walking around with children when they're handing dollar bills to them. I wouldn't want that as a man. There's another picture.
I trust my kids with that, and I would have given my kid a dollar.
I don't trust.
A dollar bill. And don't go. If you don't like it, don't go. It was a private event, paid by someone private. If you don't like it, don't go. If you would like to hold your own meeting there, then do it. And if people don't like it, they won't go. So if you don't like it, don't go. So, if you don't like.
I think the difference.
Jim, real quick question.
Different.
Protective speech.
I believe there's.
Under the first amendment. I'm sorry, I asked a question. Protective speech.
What I've heard is nobody agrees on exactly what went on or didn't go on, but if we were to determine what happened based on everything I've heard, I certainly think it is protected speech.
And we cannot forbid protected speech from happening on a public.
Yeah, and our our agreement with the Convention of Visitor Bureau says that it should be a a space open to everybody. I mean, that there's a paragraph in there that says that, so.
That's what I thought. We don't restrict who can rent that space.
Respectively, councilmembers, if a man walked up and started talking to them about sex of any kind, whether it was a man or two men and started talking to them about sex of any kind, whether it was a man or two men or any other kind. I would call the police or I want that man taken away. If I would go up to another child and start talking to them about sex, I would have a problem with that. Sexualization is not free speech.
That's something that didn't happen.
Right to proclaim sexuality in public to children.
Number one, that's not against the law. And number two, it didn't happen, so I don't understand what you're what you're.
I I don't know what you've.
I don't understand what you're talking about.
This, you think. The LGBTQAIIP movement is intrinsically about sexuality, is about gender identity, is about ideas that are not natural to human beings. So I'm not natural?
Like, I guess, and.
We believe, I'm promoting what I believe. I believe my values, that's why I'm here to promote. My value is that children should not be sexualized. Children should not be taught that one sexuality is just illegitimate or illegitimate. We should keep it out of the discussion in our public spaces. That's what I. Don't teach that to your kids, but if I'm gonna teach that to mine, I can do that. And that is the way life works. We shouldn't have. So like.
And I. And that's the other side of the coin is you are definitely entitled to that opinion. You are absolutely entitled to that opinion. But as far as what we are legally able to do, we follow the law and the First Amendment. Okay?
My understanding though is once that park was rented by whomever goes to rent it, it is now a private event. So it's no longer necessary, right? It's not not necessarily a public space. So.
It's a private event in a public space.
Yeah, in a public, so like a graduation.
Because.
Couldn't just follow it.
Anybody.
It was open.
Anybody could. Yeah.
Anybody could drive the high and.
See that tickets or something.
I'm just saying like I could just like hang out and sit during the graduation party. They would be like, hey, this is private night.
But it was a public, I mean, I think anybody could go, correct?
I'm just saying that at the end of the day, it was.
But this wasn't at the end. Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, I mean. There's a, there is a bill in front of the Iowa House and Senate right now that would prohibit that.
That's against the First Amendment, so. It's completely, it's completely unconstitutional.
In this country, profanity, we have had laws against profanity. We have laws against profanity. Men do not have the right to dress however they want in front of children. Women do not have the right to dress however they want in front of children.
Anyway, I'm a fan of the First Amendment personally.
But I'm here to promote my values in front of the council today, promoting my opinion. And I would gladly get more people in this town who agree with my values to come together to say we don't want this in our town. I'm not alone, but I am here to spread my opinion because I am a rational human being and a resident here in Boone. And I want to say that I don't want this in my children's view. I don't want this to anyone's children's view. I don't like anyone's children sexualized. I don't want my children sexualized. That's why I'm here today. Not here today working a twelve-hour shift at work, just to go back tomorrow to work another twelve-hour shift at work. I'd rather be home with my family. But I'm here today to express my opinions and the opinions of others in Boone, that children should not be sexualized. It's a very simple idea. It's the only idea I wish to get across today. Respectfully, thank you for your time.
I was born and raised here in Boone. I went and I joined the Navy to represent women and those who cannot use their voices. I want children too. I like to protect my children. You know what? We, I, I fought for people for people to stand up for what, who they are. We have had people threaten me and and now I'm going to go to the theater. We've had people threatening men. Because women are a lot more yet. Men have seen a plus with it. To put on a show. Women who couldn't be in the military.
Hey.
To be fighting with their husbands, their brothers, and so fighting side by side. So are you saying that we should not be doing that? That's what you're saying. You're saying that we shouldn't have a voice to protect others, or children. I can protect my children. It is also my choice as a parent to make that decision to go up there and he's probably told us, everybody is included. There is a sector. There is, if you feel like you don't feel like you are a boy, you feel like you are a girl, it'll pay, baby. I don't want you to kill yourself because of the society has thrown those issues on you because daddy say that you're supposed to dress like a boy and act like a boy. I wanted to be a boy.
Can I say I respect your opinion and and we appreciate you speaking up. I I think that's why we're here, is to hear everyone's opinions and to also legally, we have to follow kind of, you know, the First Amendment and things, but I respect your opinion and I don't think we need to get into debating that here at a meeting, but I think we could move on.
Sure. I know, is there a way, surely, I mean, I I got this email too, because I'm, I mean, you live in Ward one, and a couple other people called about similar things. This is probably not gonna be the last time something face that not everyone likes. Well, um yes, I'm not sure what 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 there's to make. I mean.
The the easiest thing to do is just follow the First Amendment, not discriminate. If somebody has somebody that's objectionable to me there, which there could be plenty of things, look, gotta let it happen.
It's not.
First Amendment.
And I I think that's for you to step in. I mean, you're going to provide the guidance that.
Well, it's not only the easiest thing to do, but it's the only thing we can do. Yeah, the law is the law. We, I mean, uh, I don't know how you draw those lines, those restrictions. You're not going to prohibit uh creative speech and those kinds of activities. Uh, where do you stop?
There will be controversial, I mean, abortion, anti-abortion, I mean, whatever. We, there's all different sides to these things that.
Right.
Yeah, we have to.
CVV, CVV actually makes the decision on who rents it and who doesn't.
Right.
Get out on this. Barry, you're on the board.
We uh we don't discriminate against any. I mean, the following weekend, Easter weekend, there was a religious service there.
That that's what our agreement requires that it be open to everybody.
And I have reviewed. Chris reached out to you and and that was, that was, I think, and I when we first started and laid down the bylaws for things, we wanted nothing where that would be legal or something like that. I mean, this is similar to the Trump wall. And there.
Another First Amendment.
Aftermath that we had from the Trump wall, there was nothing we could do about that as well.
That was private.
I mean, I don't necessarily agree with it, but you're right, it's First Amendment. I.
Okay, any other questions, comments before we move on? Okay, next up, any council member comments?
I do have something. Um, I just want to share briefly a few details about the um assessment that we have coming up next week. It's April twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth. And just to review, um, this is done, it's called, I have to look at this, the Downtown Resource Center at the Iowa Economic Development Authority. So this is a state agency is coming to Boone to assess our downtown area. And there is a cost, and the chamber is picking up the cost for this. The um, so you'll notice there will be an assessment team of five professionals that will be in the community, and this will be those three days, so it will go on. Uh, and they start out, um, they'll be doing a a tour through the community. And then they will do a walking tour, so they'll be around downtown, going in a lot of the businesses. They will be conducting interviews for about two days, that Wednesday afternoon and all day Thursday. And so um, a lot of us will be involved in those interviews. The team is really looking at the downtown um status of our downtown area. They're going to then come up with a report. They also, um, they will have recommendations, suggestions, comments just on our downtown area. And the one thing that I do really want to mention is there is then a public session that they will share these results, and that is on the Friday um here at City Hall, the auditorium, and that will be from noon, twelve o'clock to one-thirty. And so they will go over uh in that time, the report that that they uh will compile. And so I think that's a real good time for us to kind of hear what they see, what their recommendations, comments, our suggestions. And this, uh, why this is important is we will be able to use this information then to proceed in working towards becoming a Main Street community. And we will be able to uh use this in our application and uh give us kind of a a really what comprehensive look at downtown and what some professionals are coming in and saying, here's what would really make sense, how to proceed. So I think it's really a good thing.
Just to link this point, uh, thank you, everybody who's been able to fill out the survey. I've known a lot of you guys have shared that. So, A, Jim asked me to get, he really wanted anywhere from hundred to two hundred survey results, and Boone has given them over twenty-one hundred and fifty. So I, I mean, I think A, she have a lot of opinions, but B, I think it's a lot of creative speech. It's really how um to make our downtown what our community wants. So I'm super excited about that.
Yeah. Very good. Any other council comments?
Real briefly from me, uh, Wellness Center Committee had our initial meeting yesterday, just to uh started the ball rolling, not much to report, um, but did support the creation of the director position and just getting the groundwork laid. So no date for the next meetings. We'll work on some other things behind the scene.
Okay. Brief report. Any other council comments? Any public comments for items not on the agenda? Not this meeting is adjourned.